All right, mine says we're streaming live.
Participant?
Eddie, that's me. Do you hear me?
Yep.
I hear you too.
We hit part participants. To see us on air.
Okay. Yep, yep, I'll change your name in just a minute here.
Yes, Greg, if we do participants.
Debbie, you're good. We can see as a participant.
Oh, you can?
Yeah. Now, are you shooting for just the audio or?
It doesn't come up on our screen.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any video on you guys, but we can hear you.
I'll come look and see if I can get them.
I'll let you know when I get confirmation from Laura. It takes a second. She puts it up on the website.
Mine's saying we're live on YouTube right now.
Yep, yeah, we are. We're just getting the link on.
Yeah.
Just says her name.
All right, there we go. Bonnie, I see you.
You have to scroll around the bottom in order to get all those other little choices.
Okay, all right. I think we got everybody here. Alan, you there?
I'm here.
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Can anybody hear me?
Tom, we got you. All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
And Ms. Bachelor?
Here.
All right, Eddie, let's throw up the flag. We'll do the pledge. All right. Bonnie and Debbie, would you guys mind leading us as is tradition?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible.
Anybody see me?
And justice for all.
All right. Who is busting in with can we see you during the pledge, which? Which one of you hooligans?
Um, King raised his hand.
All right.
Eddie, I don't know if you can see me.
Yep, yep, you can see you.
Start video.
Hello?
Tom, you're gonna be there. Tom, I see you at two different locations here.
All right.
But Tom, even though we can see you in two locations, we're only gonna pay you once, okay?
I'm not paying frozen Tom. I'm only paying the Tom that's around.
I have no idea how to turn on the sound.
He can't hear us, so we can rag on him all we want.
We're all, oh, if he can't hear me.
Hey, Tom, can you hear us? All right, Eddie, call Tom and work that out off to the side.
Got it.
And flop forward.
I can do that. Eddie can stay on the call and I can do that.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Nick?
I can.
This is Chuck Lane.
Chuck, I can hear you.
Okay.
All right, guys, now, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. The purpose of this meeting is to get an update from On the Green at Royal Oak Management Team for what's been going on in our last On the Green meeting and now. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and turn it over to whoever would like to be the spokesperson for On the Green. I assume that's you, Mr. Novak. Is that correct?
I do see Mr. Novak here. Can you hear us, Mr. Novak?
Mr. Novak, yeah, we can hear you. If there's no one else on the call from the On the Green, would you like to go ahead and fill us in?
Sure. I mean, they're, my clients are with me.
Okay.
Don't want to sit too close to one another. So. I'd noise, sorry. We're happy to report regarding the 15-point. I mean, we're essentially finished with the things that needed to be. That we agreed to. Obviously, there's some things that are ongoing that have been ongoing. We intend to continue to move on with, and that includes communication with the police department. You know, continuing to do the same background checks that I reported about last time, that they do the highest run of background consumer reporting that they can on all new tenants. And then when someone's lease expires and it's time to renew the lease, and they're doing the same exact background report with renewal leases as they do with those residents who are brand new to the facility. And there have been, there's gonna be a few, you know, evictions of a couple, would say three problem tenants that are being taken care of. And that's really where they are. They're gonna keep investing into the cosmetics of the property and structure as they had planned to since the beginning. And they continue to do the background checks and consumer reporting of all incoming residents. They're gonna continue to, I think they're paying what $500 a month, Gene?
Yes.
For one of your officers patrol and to continue to speak with and have meetings with the, both the police and the fire department on an ongoing basis. That's kind of where they plan to move forward. And that's where we are. So we're pretty pleased to report of the 15 points that are originally addressed and the nuisance resolution that the ones that could be finished are finished and the ones that need to be ongoing are ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. At this time, I will go ahead and Chief Bachman, do we have you on the call? You have Chief Bachman? That would be iPhone Jeff, I believe.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, I am here.
Would you like to fill us in, Chief Bachman, on what has transpired between our last meeting and now as far as you're concerned with On the Green apartment complex?
Yeah, I think, I think the only snafu that we have run into is the COVID-19 and the shutting down of the eviction courts and the county. As I said in numerous meetings, these evictions take a long time. And for us to be stopped for two and a half months has been a setback. I talked to Gene a few weeks ago. He told me there was three to four people who were on the list before COVID-19, and then they, of course, had to stop. And now that evictions have started up again, I hope to see these people gone in the very near future. I think that would help out immensely. If you don't mind, I'll jump, I'll jump ahead a little bit. You can see our police radio runs on Eddie. We're a couple sheet. Look, there it is. So you can see that if we were to look at the last three years, we did January, February, March, April, May of 2018, 2019, and 2020. Got a little graph there that kind of shows. We started off very well this year with 12 runs, which was the lowest of any of the three years. In February, we were still good at 16 runs, which was the lowest of the three years. March, we had a spike somewhat, but we were very close to 2019. April, we again dipped to a good amount, and then May, it skyrocketed up to 42, which is not good. Again, I'm gonna contribute some of this to eviction courts not, not being able to help out. And also, I believe that maybe the tension of being bottled up inside, lack of employment opportunities with the virus and everything like that may contribute. When I compiled the runs for May, there were five runs to one apartment alone for domestic disputes. So I think that, I mean, that kind of, you know, if you're making five runs a month to the same couple, that's gonna kind of offset your numbers slightly, but that would even bring it down to 37, which is still a little bit higher than we would like. So that's, that's kind of where we are on the, on the, on the police aspect. Are there questions from Mr. Novak or any Gene or Dave or anything?
Chief, can I ask real quick about? What's up with March? I just refreshed my memory. When did the stay-at-home thing go into play?
I believe that started like the second week of March, wasn't it? Actually, I got, I got it here.
It was March the 13th.
March 19th is when the stay-at-home war began.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm just kind of trying to understand that because it did dip quite a bit from there in April.
Yeah, like I said, I wish I could figure it out. You know, I don't have the answers. I wish I did. Like I said, one, you know, when, when you, like I said, when you have five runs to one place for, for May, that kind of, kind of tells you a lot, but I don't. Yeah, I don't know how it's up, and then, and then a month later it dips down to 20, from 35 to 24. So I don't have the answers. I just compiled the numbers for me. Go ahead.
April is stimulus and tax return time.
Very good. And you mentioned a fair amount of runs to the same place, Chief. From a statistics standpoint, I don't know if you're familiar with the 80/20 rule, but typically in processes, 80% of your issues comes from 20% of your process. Would you should, would you say that 80% of these issues are coming approximately from 20% of the, of the amount of units there? I mean, what's your breakdown? I can, like you mentioned, can one or two units having a high volume of calls really skew this data?
Yeah, I don't know if I would say it's 80/20, but if you were to get rid of it, as I've always said, about six, seven, five, six, seven units, the numbers would decrease immensely. I can just look on the May sheet and see that we made almost 10 runs to three, three apartments altogether. So five at one, three on another, two at one for the month of May. Give it to those three units, and we're down to 32, which would, which would be a good number. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly the 20/80 rule, but I know there is a small percentage where we make a lot of runs too.
But you know, the other thing that I think would be is to know what kind of runs they were compared to some of the other, you know, high months and other years. So I mean, if we're talking about, you know, some minor offenses, but you're showing up, you know, and, and then leaving versus something more serious like, you know, drug charges or whatever. Do you have that broken down so that you have a sense of severity of the offense?
I have each run that we made and what it is. So, yeah, each, each of the 42 runs tells me what it is. But the thing about that is when I compiled these for the last five years or whatever was it, Mr. Kelly assisted on, I use the same process. So, yeah, we do make some runs, some, some keys locked in vehicles that are, you know, we go there, we open the door. We've done that in May. Of course, we did it in May of 2016, 2017, 2018, 19. So the, the numbers are, I mean, the, the nature of the runs are the same calculation every month. So, yeah, we do have some runs here that are, you know, are just people calling with some silliness, but we've had that every month. We have serious runs here before me, but we have those pretty much every month also.
Well, what I, what I'm kind of getting at is, is trying to break away the notion of if it is because everybody's kind of cooped up and they're there at the site, at the location around 24/7 versus, you know, they go off to work or they go someplace else during the day in a normal time. So if you're getting, you know, a lot of, you know, minor, you know, keys locked in cars, you know.
From looking at it right before me, I have every month from this year, this month of, this month of May has a lot of domestic dispute.
Got it, okay.
Which is, which is from, you know, the, the two people living together, man or man, and the couple married, whatever.
Right, okay.
Too much time together.
No, I, I think there's some truth to that. I mean, you're on top of each other all the time, and sometimes when you're working, you've got that eight to 10-hour break, and you come home and you're too tired to get into it, but when you're stuck at home and money is an issue, you know, tempers can flare, so.
All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Eddie, do you have anything to add? Eddie, audio.
Yeah, there's a couple interesting items. I mean, there's some stuff that's unrelated I won't get to just yet, but as far as the, the runs go, looking at the EMS fire runs, which Chief Wright can talk to, I think show a pretty similar, fairly interesting story as well, if we get into that. I won't, I won't trample over that just yet, but I can get into my portion of the review if you'd like or let Chief Wright continue on the emergency response.
Whatever you prefer. What do you think's most appropriate?
Hey, Chief Wright, would, would you want to speak to some of the trends on the runs right now?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And ours are a little different. You know, we, we switched systems for this year, so our 2018 data had to be archived, and I'm still working to get that, and I can provide it when it's done. But, I mean, I think overall, our numbers are, are for a complex of that size with the number of residents, I don't think our numbers are bad. And just to clarify that a little bit, those are total numbers for fire and EMS responses. And there's nothing that really jumped out at me. I mean, it was, you know, we had wires down. We had storm events. We had a couple of auto accidents, general EMS calls for, for everything under the sun. I mean, it could have been chest pain, sick person. So, I mean, there's really nothing in there that jumps out trend-wise for us, but we do have dips, and I think much like the police. You know, in the, the winter months, we see the injuries from falls, and we see the colds and the flus, and, and then spring's not too bad. Summer, you know, when people are, have a little more free time, we, our runs go up a little bit, but overall, our, our numbers have been down pretty well. And I'm, I'm happy with where we are in our responses.
I do think it's interesting that in both cases, January and February. So January and February were down, and, you know, over both cases. Of course, something fairly significant occurred in March, which kind of upset the whole, the whole process a bit, but I think it'll be interesting to see how this trends continues.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you, guys. I love the, the charts and the data. That's very tangible. Eddie, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, absolutely. So, on, we, we have all gone multiple times since the last meeting. Our last full, last full update meeting was January. And of course, this, this full, this is the next full meeting that we had requested. So over that course of time, we've been monitoring, but I did a full review on the 22nd as well and kind of went over the 15-point list. I also met with Mr. Jacobson on site. We had a really good discussion in general. So I'll just give you some of the major highlights about what, what I kind of encountered in a couple days back. So the pool has been cleaned and opened, although it's not open to the public at this time. Mr. Jacobson can probably speak to that a little bit. There's, there's no lifeguard on duty or anything to that effect, but the pool is in fact open, as you can see in photo number one here. So that, that is positive. It's a, I know that was a number, it was the number one item on the list here. Not necessarily of importance per se, but it definitely was an endeavor, I know. Lights continue to be in great repair. Spot check of stairways indicated that many were in good condition. I believe a couple are still being repaired as we speak. I think there's two that may be in disrepair, according to Mr. Jacobson. Potholes and some moderate disrepair remain in the parking lot. Nothing overly severe, but something to still continue to work on. Some draperies remain in disrepair, as you can see in photo number three. During my visit on June 22nd, I noticed one inoperable vehicle, as you can see in photo four. In January, during our spot check, there were, I believe, four vehicles that were in, in disrepair. Mr. Jacobson has, to my knowledge, implemented a program where he's continuously checking and making sure that they're tagging vehicles and that sort of thing as well. So the ongoing monitoring is very positive. The site appears to be generally free of debris and garbage. The fence and court, it's a tennis court. They remain at the present time, but alternative plans for basketball, kickball, lawn games are similar. With resurfacing and fence repairs is encouraged, as you can see in photo five. My understanding is that this is a very popular area for children to play, but as you can see, there's really, there's not much in the way of any established activity, basketball hoops, anything to that effect. So activating that area would probably be a very big benefit. As far as siding goes, the, the site was power washed, but as in photo six, you can see the management office still has not been power washed. That would probably be something that'd be advantageous to get that checked out. Screening system remains in place. I believe that approximately 40% of all the units have now gone through the screening process as of October to date. At the, let's see here, at the last meeting, I believe that this, this is an increase of approximately 14% since the last, since January, if my understanding is correct. Cameras have been installed. Signage has also been installed, as documented in photo seven. Further, staff understands that 12 of 18 units in the building that was, that suffered a structure fire have been fully repaired as well. Staff has potential steps forward as well, but I'll yield the rest of my, rest of my time here, unless someone wants to discuss that further.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
All right, at this time, I will go ahead and double-check with my colleagues. Alan and Bonnie, do you guys have anything to add at this, at this point?
Nick, I have one thing. I had a resident that lives on Castle Bay, the next street over. Her biggest complaint was she feels like it's hard to even think about selling her residence because, as Eddie just mentioned, you said there was only one blind that was in disarray. The way she talked, there was more, but the one is the only one you saw, Eddie, when you were there?
I, I can tell you, I, I saw a couple, I would say. That there is fewer than there were, but there were, there were definitely more than just the one photo I took. I took the one photo just as a sample, just to document that it was something that did stand out.
And she lives on that, on the right-hand side going down Castle Bay, so she backs up to that area.
Well, that seems like something that is noticeable. I know ownership has expressed the pitfalls and issues with keeping those in good shape, particularly with pets and things like that. I don't know if you guys want to speak to the blind deal at all.
Put in 111 sets since January, and people get damaged. And, you know, regarding the resident's concern, I mean, we understand their concern, but I mean, we think that when they're damaged, we're doing the best we can to replace them, and you know, it is what it is. So we're doing the best we can.
Thank you, sir. Alan, you got anything?
Nothing at the moment. I may reserve the right to come back in at a later point.
All right. Can I talk?
Sure.
This is Chuck Lane.
All right, hold on. Chuck, just before you, I'm, I'm happy you're gonna talk here, but let's take a quick pause. What I'd like to do at this point is we'll open it up to resident participation. And Chuck, you're gonna be the first one. But Eddie, would you mind unmuting yourself and going ahead and reviewing back over how you raise your hand and how you do it from a phone if you're not on the computer?
Sure, absolutely. So if you are on the phone, you'll press star nine in order to unmute yourself. And then if you have, if you are participating on the computer, you can utilize a participant panel and press the raise your hand button.
Which one is that?
It's on the bottom of the, so if you click participants, it'll be on the bottom of that panel.
Not that you have to go through these motions, Chuck. I'll go ahead and, let's let Chuck talk. Eddie, let's make sure everybody else is muted, other than their trustees, and we'll go ahead and let Chuck have input here, and anybody else who'd like to have input, just follow Eddie's direction. We also have a, a line you can call in on. That's on our website under the meeting instructions, and if you're having issues, you can call in, and we will try to help you out. So that being said, Chuck, go ahead.
I was at the meeting in January, and I met with some of the people from On the Green. And we talked about some of the stuff that is most visible to the golf course, because I belong to Still Meadow Country Club. And for example, the one apartment, which is on hole number 15, right at the end of the fairway, the person on there still has his washer and dryer on his deck, which the guy told me, we were talking to the guy, and we're gonna get him to remove stuff like washers and dryers on the deck, because that doesn't look like a very, you know, orderly way to do stuff, and it's still there. On the backside, where the fire was in the building, it looks like a lot of work has not been completed on that building yet. The, the, some windows are still boarded up, the, the top, the, the, the part of the roof, the, the panels that go on the roof is all gone or, or messed up. So I haven't seen a lot of improvement that makes it more visually better, at least from the golf course. And that was one of the key things they were gonna do in their, in their, there was, to maintain the property, was to clean up along the golf course and clean up all that area.
Thank you, Chuck. All right.
Do we, I mean, do we have a response from On the Green regarding that?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've made tremendous progress on the building that's being reconstructed, and more people have moved in, correct?
We have right now, I think, 11 people have moved in that building.
Yeah, 11 people have moved in the building. There is progress, so.
I'm going for a certificate of occupancies for two units this coming week.
Okay, so we're gonna extend the certificates of occupancy, so it, there has been improvements made. So whether or not someone can necessarily see them from the golf course doesn't mean that they're not occurring, number one. Number two, you know, someone, you know, they have tried to address the washer and dryer on the deck, and, you know, with the courts being closed and eviction process, there's like so much we can do at this point in time.
Is that particular unit under eviction notice?
No, and we're not able to evict somebody for that.
But we, but we had this discussion the last time we met.
Well, we've asked them to move it, and until his lease has expired, we can't necessarily evict them for that.
We've been told him we would help move it.
And we've offered to move it. We've offered to help move it. Says it's his washer and dryer. We can't evict them for it. So until his lease has expired, there's really not much we can do about it.
Eddie, is there anything we can do about it?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch the exact issue about what, what the eviction should be sent for.
I think some guy's got a washer and dryer out on his patio or porch or something. Is that what's going on?
On the second floor.
Yeah, so I don't, that's not typical.
We can send a letter. It, it could very well be in violation of ORC as far as storing equipment and things to that effect on your property. So that is something we could send a letter about. We could go out, we can investigate and definitely take a look. As far as evictions go, I, I don't know that that's, you know, that, that's. definitely take a look. As far as evictions go, I I don't know that that's, you know, that that's a nuance of their contract, but as far as the ORC goes, that's definitely something that we can cite. It's outdoor storage.
All right, you'll look into that, Eddie, and let us know.
Yep, absolutely.
Chuck, what were the other items that you mentioned?
Well, the building that is on the golf course by where the other, the fairways apartment is, that there's a lot of construction that's not, it looks very bad with the windows all boarded up, that the roof line is not done, the gutter is hanging down. Some of the siding on the side of the building is all gone or not falling off. It's just, it just looks like it's very bad. I mean, like a slum. It's like, looks, doesn't look good at all. You know, I mean, the golf course is a is a high-priced golf course and when you take members and guests out there to play golf, you don't expect to go through something that looks that bad. And the big thing in the January meeting is they were going to fix up, power wash, clean, get rid of all this stuff and fix it up. And it's been many months now and you would think that there should be more progress visually to make it look good. And that's what we wanted. The other thing was the police, they were gonna maybe hire their own security force to cut down on some of these runs and I I is there some update about the police stuff too? That they were gonna hire a watchman or?
That was discussed. Right, Eddie?
Yeah, so in in, you know, Chief Bachman can speak a little bit more on it, but it it was implemented. And I believe it may have been put on pause for due to pandemic and that sort of circumstance, but I believe that it is back on inactive.
Well, I think, I believe during Chief Bachman's report, or perhaps it might have even been Mr. Miller Novak's comments that was brought up that they are continuing the agreement with our police department to have a have a patrol. Yeah, I could think the cost is what at five hundred dollars a month. So that was confirmed that that's continuing. So that is happening, Chuck.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't know that. So that's, I do appreciate that.
No, I just want to make sure you 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 were aware, but also now back to on the green. As far as the timeline of fixing up the, you know, Chuck mentioned the boarded up windows and that sort of thing. What is the timeline toward getting that getting that completed?
Well, first, the reason there's boards on the windows is because we were instructed to do that by by the fire chief.
Of course.
Our choice. So while there's construction going on inside and for safety, we were instructed by the government to put boards on the windows, so.
Okay, so that's our fault. Thank you. Okay, now what's the timeline?
There are seven workers that are working in the building now and they're working on, do we have any estimate?
Takes us about three weeks to four weeks per unit to go through the entire process. The electric, right now, wiring, all new wiring in the six units.
It's about three to four weeks per per unit. We have six units.
Six units left.
Six units left.
So we would expect to see that removed by August?
That would be fine. It it as long as the fire department allow us, we'll take, we'll take the boards down and put blinds in them, even though they're not completed and and that will be done.
I mean, that's up to the fire department whether or not the boards can be removed, but we're looking at six to eight weeks. No, it's six, you said, it's a lot more than that.
There's, it takes us, it's it's gonna take us.
Three weeks for at least for six units, so six times three is eighteen weeks. Yeah, it's more like October, November before it's a hundred percent complete.
But if the cosmetics and all he's worried about, if they'll let us take those, that sheet rock or the plywood down, we'll 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 make sure the glass is totally done and I'll drape it.
Well, we, you know, regarding the boards in the meantime, that's up to the, that's up to the township. If they want us, I mean, we're willing to put glass and, you know, sheets of glass into the windows and put up blinds while it's being constructed, you know, whatever. If you'd prefer we do that, we're willing to talk about that.
Chief, right? Is that something that would be acceptable to you?
Absolutely. So initially after the fire, the big concern was just the security of the building so that nobody got in. So if that's something that that the on the green staff are able to do and put windows back in just to make sure those units are secured, I'm perfectly content with that.
Can you chase that to the ground with the on the green folks, please?
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
We we would love to get rid of the boards, so.
Good, we agree.
Follow up with Dave.
I mean, there's more than just the boards in the windows. You, the siding in the back, the the trim along the top where the gutters are hanging down, there are other things besides just the boards. That building, you did a good job on the front of it. You replaced the brick that was removed. You've done a good job, but you put some doors in. I think one of the doors on the front is still missing boarded up. So I mean, there has been some progress and I I want to give you credit for that. But right now, it just doesn't look good at all. When you're bringing guests from a golf thing or coming by there, it just looks like it's in bad shape and it doesn't look like there's any progress. When did they start the three weeks per unit? Because this been sitting like that since, I mean, it's been a long, long time.
Chuck, if you will, all that stuff's been contracted. And if you you feel like we did a good job on the front, you should trust that we're gonna do a good job on the back. All the contractors are lined up and we're, you know, sorry, you're gonna feel that way for the remainder of your golf season, but just think next spring you'll be pretty happy when the back's finished.
Okay.
All right, Chuck, anything else?
No. I just want that place to be better looking and, you know, even with all of the police runs you talked about and and the fire runs and everything, I still think that this is way higher than any other apartment complex like your data showed before. Just because we have these numbers of runs and and fire and stuff like that does not mean it is normal. It's it's higher than a complex in other complexes when you did that analysis of per resident, how many runs they have. So just saying that, well, okay, it's about the same as it was in eighteen and nineteen, doesn't doesn't show me any improvement. They should be getting the numbers in half. They should be getting them way lower. And I understand if evictions are part of it, then we've got to follow through and get the people out that are causing the problem.
Thank, thanks, Chuck. I'm really glad that you added on that last part in addition to the aesthetic issues with the golf course because I think in a lot of ways, that's been our main focus is really looking to kind of improve the situation so that the community and the people within that complex, as well as the residents outside of it and around it, feel safe. I mean, we we want to decrease the crime. We want to have a an impact on kind of the overall situation when it comes to quality of life and safety. So I I feel like, and this is my opinion, that a lot of this stuff stemmed from in essence, a lack of background checks early on in perhaps an effort to fill vacant occupancy. Could be off on that. Not sure what your opinion is on that, but that being said, I feel like the root cause is really has a lot to do with the screening applicants. And Eddie, I was really interested and you really piqued my interest when you mentioned that we were tracking the percent increase on on the amount of occupants that have been screened at this point. And I really think that's a data point we need to hone in on and track closely. I think you said we're at forty percent. And I I believe that the higher we get that percentage, in addition to some aesthetic improvements and things like that, it does all tie together. But I feel like that number is is something we really need to continue to track and and focus on.
Yeah, sounds good.
So a graph for that and continual tracking and pointing at that on that. And we're gonna have, you know, I I'm looking at trend lines here, particularly with the amount of calls. I mean, I'm looking at some kind of in-between mean trend line when we're looking at this data too. You're gonna have ups and downs, you're gonna have circumstances that move these points around from month to month. Doesn't necessarily mean you're doing a bad job and it doesn't necessarily mean you're doing a good job. I think we're really looking for an average that is trending in a in a good direction over time. Mr. Novak, do you have anything to add to that?
No, not particularly. Wouldn't know what I would add to it at this point in time.
Alan, Bonnie?
Nothing, Nick. Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
I'm not seeing any other raised hands. So we have anybody else that's tuning in now that wants to speak or have any input on this matter?
Just a reminder, if you're on the phone, star nine and otherwise, it's raise hand on your participant panel. If you're having any trouble as well, you can send a message over the chat. See if you're having trouble with either of those items.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone else right now. So question is, when would we like to hold the next meeting? And what are we gonna be tracking between now and then? Mr. Novak, what do you think?
Well, I don't know. I I'm not comfortable scheduling one right now. We've got, I I mean, honestly, there's there's just too much unsurety about travel and things like that right now. I I would rather schedule another meeting with your administrator and Mr. Keating through email than pick a date certain right this second.
So how would you expect us to track the progress and keep people informed and all that stuff? If we don't set a date at some point to meet back again and kind of talk about this?
Well, I said that I would schedule a meeting or talk about scheduling a meeting with Debbie and I'm sorry, it's not Debbie, it's Ms. Roke and and Mr. Keating, you know, in terms of how you communicate to the public once the meeting's set and we kind of pick a date. I mean, I just don't even have my calendar with me right now.
What would your approximate timeframe be? What do you think? One month, two months? What do you what do you think's appropriate based on what we're working on at this point?
No, I'd rather do it in fall and we're closer to finishing the units that that we were discussing earlier if we're gonna do it.
How do you think that plays into some of the data we're tracking and police runs and things? Do you think that's too long or do you think that's appropriate?
I personally think it's appropriate. I mean, I don't know exactly how you're you're tracking your data necessarily. I mean, we're meeting with your police department on a regular basis. We're meeting with your fire department on a regular basis. There's constant conversations between the agents of my client and and your agents regarding calls and things they can do on a daily basis to improve that, whether it's an eviction, reporting somebody for bad behavior, being informed of a resident with bad behavior, they're on an ongoing basis doing background checks. So, I mean, these are updates. I mean, I hate to say this, but there's nothing substantive happening here. This is us talking to you and to the public about things that are going on and things that have happened. The real substance and the real improvements are made are made in one-on-one meetings between my clients and your agents about things that are done and little things that can happen. So, you know, I think the main progress comes from and and the substantive progress comes from that. I mean, this is more of a an informational thing to the public as much as something that's fixing anything.
I appreciate that and I appreciate you guys' participation and input and that's why I kind of want to give you first stab at what your opinion was on when we should meet next and that kind of thing. And keep in mind too that this is the only way the three of us trustees can communicate. So there is some substance to these meetings because we're talking through things and kind of keeping our finger on the pulse too. Otherwise, we have no real means to communicate between each other.
Well, I get that, but you know, as you know, the Open Meetings Act doesn't apply to meetings between my my clients and your agents, right? And your administrative staff. So, I mean, they can do that on the fly on on a daily basis and I can also talk to Ms. Roke. I can send her emails and Tom emails and they can always bring, they can always bring my email to a public meeting and bring it to your attention or something like that. But, you know, I I think in terms of us making a public appearance, you know, we probably want to wait until we're really close to finishing up that building and and those units. It's a little bit more enjoyable to us to come and spike a football rather than than just, how I put this, you know, answer criticisms.
On the ten yard line about whether you're gonna get in or not. So we'll get a, we'll get a spike football next time.
I like spiking footballs. I don't look good, but I don't mind a little athleticism every now and then.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, that being said, Eddie, well, unless Bonnie or Alan want to weigh in, but let's get some other opinions on when we should meet next.
I'm I'm very comfortable with kind of the general terms. Let's say, let's target September, but let's let the on the green folks work that out with Eddie and the rest of the gang to get a specific date, but allow them the time, you know, that that they need. So what are we, we're in June. If we did it in September, that'd be the third month. We're three months away from now. I think that would be appropriate to target that generally. But then let let our team negotiate that with on the green, specific date.
Okay. Bonnie, how do you feel about that?
Well, Nick, I mean, we're, you might as well say we're at the end of June. I would rather do it a little bit later, like Alan said, maybe September. I would be anxious to see how far along are they on this building at that time if they're thinking October is gonna be the finish. I'd like to do it a little bit later and see how far they are. Hopefully, things are near the end by then.
Okay. Mr. Novak is giving some sort of emojis on his end, thumbs up, clapping.
I think he's giving us the finger.
What that is, Nick.
Un him, kick him out.
There you go.
Oh, that that's that's the right finger. I'm sorry. I just saw the wrong finger. I'm sorry.
Hey, Alan, behave. I'll get my shovel.
Well, to, you know, we're we're fine with September, October. I mean, you know, I think Mr. Alan made a couple of good points, but I think like Bonnie's a little bit smarter and we actually think October is the way to go, so.
Thank you.
Bonnie, so maybe like late September, early October. Split the difference, kids?
I'm certainly willing to split.
Yeah, just be cautious, you know, Bonnie, I think Bonnie's moving on at the end of the, Alan will still be here for probably longer.
Now, we don't know that for sure, do we?
We know you're moving on. We know I'm staying here.
All right, that sounds fine with me. I I genuinely just wanted to get input on that, how you guys felt about it. And Eddie, I want to reiterate too that I do think tracking this percentage of occupants that have been screened thing is is really a piece that I want to see when we come back on the next, at the next meeting.
Sounds good. We'll continue looking at it.
Okay. All right, let's allow for one more run of anybody else who wants to participate on this matter before we move to adjournment here.
Not seeing any.
Chuck Lane, can you hear me?
Chuck, I can hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say the end of September. I mean, we've gone for years now with this problems and, you know, having these public meetings, I hate to say it, but I think it's keeping everyone informed and keeping things up to date and it's kind of, you know, when you know you have a meeting date, you know you have to get some things done, things get tend to get done a little bit quicker and get these things resolved. I mean, we've, we've had these apartments being a problem now for many, many years. And we can't drop the ball now. I don't care about spiking or anything you want to do. We need to get the thing done now and we need to get it done timely. And so, you know, I mean, it's got to be done. And I think a meeting in September when they're gonna have those units done, I don't know when that guy's lease is that has a washer and dryer, but maybe that can be handled and some of the other things on the building that need to be fixed up and cleaned up, that can be done. This is good construction, whether they should be able to get some stuff done now.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, why don't we shoot for having the meeting by by October one, by the end of September? Does that sound all right? All right, anybody else who would like to participate? Public input. Not seeing anyone. Eddie, real quick, how do you do it from a phone?
Star nine on the phone or raise your hand button on the participant panel.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Um, do I have any, anyone else that wants to, uh, Matt or Debbie or Bonnie or Alan?
No, we, we have nothing further to add, um, thank you, I think by October first, we're we're game.
Sounds great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Not yet.
Make the motion.
Not yet.
Uh-oh.
You'll notice on our agenda, we also have a, a, a thing for old, old business. I just want to remind, we had a motion made at our last board meeting uh, directing our law director to investigate the workload of one Todd Hart. And to, uh, push for a motion to be made at our meeting tomorrow. Um, I'd like to remind uh, everyone of that motion and make sure that we're on target to take action.
All right, that's fine, that sounds fine with me, Alan, yeah.
Tom, are you there?
I'm here, I'm, I'm here, I hear you. Tom, now if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Tom.
Hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm on it. I've already spoken to the, uh, law director over there and I'm getting getting in the data and the justification for why he's been paid. So, yeah, we'll have some, some answers.
Thank you, Tom.
If you'll remember, if, if you'll remember, the motion was to, uh, determine the workload because we had an agreement that said that if the, if the workload is minimal or non-existent, um, we would terminate his, uh, his employment. So the motion is, is that if that's truly the case and it is minimal and not, or non-existent, then we should be making a motion to terminate.
Right. Yes.
All right, I just want to make sure we're on track.
On track, yes.
Thanks, Tom. You, you sound like you're, you're calling in from the International Space Station.
I, I am, I'm talking through Loretta's phone and I'm talking through my cellphone, for some reason my computer is like the, the microphone doesn't seem to work, so I don't know what's wrong.
Alan, does that all sound okay to you?
Sounds fine to me, um, but, um, you know, um, Matthew, the, the thing is that we pay our lawyer so much that he's able to book a seat on, uh, the, uh, the space shot, uh, that just went up. So that's, that's where he is right now. Um, he's getting ready to go out for a spacewalk in about five minutes.
I'm a little bit.
Really nice down there, I can tell you that.
But even wear a three-piece suit in space, so I'm a little bit disappointed. See the casual garb. Well, we're gonna head out, I think is, uh, I think our portion's done and I don't wanna. We feel weird sitting here listening to you guys, we feel a bit voyeuristic, so I think we're gonna head out. And we'll see you in late September.
All right, we'll see you around, we'll see you around creepies.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, can anything else be brought up in old business?
Well, if it's old business.
It can to an extent, Chuck, yeah, but, you know, we're not, we're not looking to get too much in the weeds on other topics, what do you got?
Well, part of the business from old business was the fence behind the Pierce Point Show. And my daughter, Brooke Keun, lives at eleven eighty-two Sycamore and her whole fence is all open where you can see all the way through it. And I know there was major plans for them, I know they've been shut down with the virus and all that. Uh, uh, what is the plan for them to, or can someone check into why the fence hasn't been repaired like they said they were going to do and have it done?
Loretta, can you give us a quick update on any information you have on that?
Yes, I contacted them, it is still on the workload, but impacted by COVID as well as them trying to manage their tenant spaces under the current circumstances, but I did receive a response to say that they will get back on track.
All right. Okay, any, anybody else? All right. I think that concludes our business, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Already did, still stands.
Seconded.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bachelor?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. See you tomorrow at ten o'clock?
Yes ma'am.
Ten AM.
Hey.
Thanks for everybody's participation, appreciate it.
Night John Boy.
Tom, stay on for a sec.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, hang on, Tom.
Okay.
Just for me, the rest of you can go.
We're excused.
I'll, I'll turn off that picture.
Are you good for me to close the meeting or are you just gonna speak over the phone? All right, I think we're good to go.
Isn't he cute?
Hi Eddie.